Call the meeting order.
We'd like to invite everyone to the Jackson County Board of Education regular board meeting. We have a good group tonight. We've got some really good presentations and have some very, very positive things on our agenda that will move our districts forward, over our district court, and also everything else. So we'll begin in Communications, Adam 2B, Jackson County Public Sewell Preschool Program presentation, Ms. Freeman, whenever you're ready.
I'm Wanda Freeman, and one of my roles here is preschool coordinator, and the last time I spoke was back in August, and since then we've had two new board members, so both new board members officially welcome. Tonight I'm going to revisit some of what I shared back in the fall, partly because it's leading into some of the new information I'd like to share about our program, and secondly, because we do have two new board members. I know that Mithal, I think at that time, was in the audience that night, and I know that Lisa also has a preschooler, so she's probably not totally aware of what I'm going to share. I had studied back then that one of the misconceptions about preschool is that it was often perceived as playtime and not as purposeful as it truly is. So I'm very proud of the program that we're building, and I'm going to share a little bit about what we've had going on through the 2022 school year. I don't want to read all this to you, but our program, our preschool program, is available to all four-year-olds, statements whose family income is not more than 160% of our poverty rate. It's available for all three and four-year-old children with developmental delays and disabilities regardless of income, and other four-year-old children with disabilities are or become available. So basically, what that means is we have to allow for availability and make provisions for space in case we have homeless kids, foster kids, or kids with other disabilities. All income district kids, we are a blended program, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute, that all income district kids must have a disability which results in an IEP, which is an individualized education plan, and they have to have a delay of one or more of the following, which is speech, language, barge or fine motor, cognitive, social, emotional, or self-help skills. And preschool is often our first line of intervention, also setting up permanent education or academic education. Our program is designed to be developed in an appropriate for young kids, who have developed in an inappropriate being defined. I'll add to me that our program focuses on physical, intellectual, social, emotional development, including interpersonal, interpersonal and social relation skills. So that's kind of lead-in to where we've been and the program that we've been building, all of those areas. So a little bit about our program in Jackson County. We are a fully blended program. So basically, what that means is a word of partnership with Community Action Council, which is basically Head Start. This partnership is going to refer to operate our classroom as shared by Head Start and the state-funded preschool. The children are financially supported basically by, we kind of co-mingle funds, we are supported by more than one funding source or agency, and we share that. So the ideal premise of this is that this guarantees all children on the same playing field in terms of equity and application. So a little bit about our program this year. For this current year, we had total 10 classrooms across the district, and this is what that looked like. We had three at San Gap Elementary, which was one Head Start classroom, which was one Head Start teacher and one Head Start instructional assistant, and two blended classrooms. That is that we had students that were both defined as district and both defined as Head Start. We had three at McKee Elementary, which were all blended, with three district teachers, one Head Start, and two district instructional assistants there. We had four classrooms at Tiner, which was one Head Start classroom, one Head Start teacher, one Head Start instructional assistant, and three blended classrooms. All of our sites, it's a requirement to be staffed with a flow array, and that just means that we have a person on hand who provides breaks and to allow us to remain in ratio, which is a federal guideline. We have to be one to 10 at all times, even if they're in their hallway, in the classroom, at specials, wherever they are, they have to be at one to 10 all the time. Our preschool program is a full-day, four-week program, with students attending mainly through Thursday, and teachers staff working on Fridays, completing parents' and family conferences. They do home visits, professional learning, instructional plans, they work on their IEPs, and this year we had the new baby identification back in the fall, which was the Child Outcomes Summary, and I'll tell more about that in just a little bit. So our focus for preschool is school readiness. So school readiness just means that we want kids to enter school ready to engage and benefit from learning. We want to promote, you know, child, the child success. We want to equip the kids with, you know, all the necessary skills that they need to prepare them for kindergarten and beyond. Our focus is preparation for kindergarten, but this, we want to provide the skills that will be lasted. Our families, our early parent education providers, our school staff, we've been partners worked together collaboratively to provide that environment, and to develop the traits that promote growth and learning to ensure that all of our kids enter school eager and excited to learn. Let's underline that. And then we have the five developmental areas for school readiness, which include approaches to learning, health and physical well-being, language communication development, social emotion development, and cognitive and general knowledge. And I think I told you this the last time I spoke, that statistically, any child who intends pre-k, which is preschool, displays greater self-regulatory behavior and improved academic skills compared to their counterparts who do not. So preschool is more important than typically assumed that it is. I probably won't read all of this to you, but I just, we have a curriculum that surprises people sometimes about preschool, but we do have a very intense curriculum for our student, with main areas focused on listening, speaking, and becoming a member of the text. And we have several goals about becoming enthusiastic and a good learner, and encouraging kids to be active and creative with play, through play, and fostering development of independence and self-confidence. I won't read all of that, but we do focus on cognition, communication, social, physical, emotional, and creative expression. And I did want to note that specifically, our program is to show children developing interpersonal skills and maximizing self-management and independence. Our preschool curriculum fronts development in these areas, while keeping to being in direct alignment with the Kentucky Early Childhood Standards. Again, one of the misconceptions is that preschool is pretty lax, and, you know, it's snacking and napping and playing, and that does, that is a big part of it. That there's purposeful play, is what I like to call it. We have very stringent guidelines and policies and regulations that only apply to preschool. Our things derive from a preschool grant application, in GMAP, which is the Grant Management Application Plan, which is where all federal money for, for the, for our grant. We have lots of monitoring that goes on, and one thing that we usually play from teachers is that we have a lot of observations and a lot of monitoring, and I'll just touch on the three main ones. We have what we call class, it's a class through assessment scoring system, and this is an observation instrument that assesses quality of teacher and child interaction. Focus is on emotional support, classroom organization, instructional support. We have people that are assigned to a team, through Head Start reaction that comes in, they are constantly doing observations, they did it at Westbury County here. We have the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, which is what we call ECHRS, and this is what our classroom purchases off-stim from this this year. It's geared towards the subscale. There's 35 items that are organized on this, that fall into a subscale of space and furnishing, department parenting, language literacy, learning activity, interaction program structure, and this is a big part of our development of inappropriate practices. And I mentioned back in the fall that we were going to have something new. We formerly had what's called KIDS, which was the, compared to Early Childhood Data Collection System. And I referenced that, and that's going to be something new. So we have just finalized our end-of-year data for new, which is the cost, the Child Outcomes Summary. It's been pretty extensive. This is basically three outcomes. The outcome was cognitive and social emotion skills, output to acquisition of knowledge and skills, and output through is used to appropriate behaviors to be taken, and that's also on a seven-point scale. But we're, we're, we just entered our final data for the year, and we give that to crew members. Anytime we have a child come in or a child gets an IEP, we also have to redo those. We have to go off and exit for initial screen. In addition, we also upload PSG, which is take the strategies goal in Child Plus, and get these mechanics data. So there is a lot that goes on with preschool, more than most folks realize. So that's kind of my lead-in. I know I talked a lot, but I want to talk about some of our projects. We've done projects inside, and now we've just finalized projects on the outside, because we want to cover all those areas that I've already seen. So I'm going to go through these quickly. These are a lot of the same photos that I shared back in the fall. But one of the things that increased the focus on creating everybody, working in space, that was really consistent with all the necessary, all the learning tools, the reason why is we want kids to love school and want to come to school. We know that for many kids, preschool is the very first experience they have outside the home, away from their families, and we want that transition to be as smooth and effortlessly, effortless as possible. So I'm going to go through all three schools, and I'm going to show you what we've done on the inside of our preschool classroom. This is at San Gap. Again, we focused on the ECHRS observation school, and we aligned all of the parts of these classrooms completely over top to apply to those areas that I've mentioned we spoke about. So this is a classroom at San Gap. Also, San Gap. We want the kids to love to come to school, and I don't think anybody can deny that that's very welcome, inviting place that kids would want to be. This one's at McKee, so I'll show you those three classrooms. Also McKee. Also McKee. And the next four will be the four classrooms at Tiner. You can see that we, all the areas that I mentioned before, the play, we've got all areas covered in those components. So the next thing that I want to talk about is what we're doing on the outside. My head is disappeared. I don't want to do it here. But that's kind of important, and one of the styles was the playground project summary. So we focused on the inside earlier in the year, finished that towards the beginning of the year, and then throughout this, up to this point in the spring, we've done a playground project in collaboration with Head Start. So we had three playground projects from McKee, San Gap, and Tiner, and those were initially initiated in June of 2021. Will Grass Recreation, which was a subcontractor for Little Tikes Commercial, was responsible for designing and committing their vehicles shortly after that project was initiated, going to June of the year prior. In turn, Community Action committed all the required documentation, developed with Head Start via grant application. That grant was approved at the end of 2021. The partners who funded the playgrounds were ordered to begin in January of '22, but we know that we're in '23. So from January '22 until November '22, Will Grass Recreation worked to procure all the supplies that were needed for these, for these three playgrounds. But during that time, as you're aware, we had our nation facing an unprecedented supply chain crisis, and the impact of changing any of the materials that were made, most of them were steel. So we couldn't have playgrounds if we didn't have steel, and we didn't, we couldn't get access to it. So the partners finally received the necessary project materials that caused the set in motion early winter of 2022. So we weren't greatly delayed, but we're done. The project start dates were staggered, and they finally came to fruition with completion, then this spring, 2023. We have just finished up the project, so, and in the fall, or Tiner, then McKee, then San Gap. And the total cost for this entire initiative on the outside was $685,772. So I'm going to show you, if I can do this work, the playground project timeline, and I know that's difficult to say, this is what they sent me, this is the consultant that we worked with, and so I'm not going to take credit for that, it's still worth it. Precisely that way, but this included the demolitions, site crack, install, and molt, and then we came back with what's called a pit surface, that's a boarding plate. The Tiner was the first one. Start, the tend to start, oh, it was, start date was December, and the completion start date was, was in March. January from McKee, it was supposed, San Gap was supposed to start in December, there was a slight delay on that, but they're all done. And I'm going to just say, if you get a chance to go by and look at these playgrounds, I would love for you to do that, because they are incredible playgrounds. They're comfortable to anything I send in the park, and the kids are loving them. I'm going to show you the layout. This first one is Tiner's, and all of these structures at all three sites also have an constant shade system that covers, so the kids are covered at all times, they're not out in the sun. Even if it's raining, they can go and play. So this, all structures are covered with the, with the shade system. And these, all of these are an extension to the existing structures that they had. That was part of our, of our deal with them, that we could maintain what we previously had, and they would extend onto the playgrounds everywhere. So this is Tiner's. Their playground is smaller, so they didn't have as much room for some of the items. But we had transfer stations, we've got an arch climber, we've got a curb climber, there's, there's lots of really nice things there. And these are actual photographs of Tiner's playground. So it's actually like the giant inch mark. As you can see, they have the purple shades in the middle. And this also is Tiner's. This next one is McKee's. It has a run ladder, activity panel, snake pole above the panel, anything you can see, the things in the park, sun climber, it has a telescope, stepping stones, and a weight slide. It's a really nice structure, and these pictures of all are actual pictures of their playground. You can see the, it's in a different color, this one, theirs is gray and green. But it's, it's a very soft cushioning surface. And they also had the installation beneath it. And the playground structure that they had previously is still attached, so instead of having to demo that one, they just did this one on the opposite side. So our maintenance department worked very hard to keep them on the ground, to make sure that all of that was on the other end. This next one is San Gap, and it's a little more extensive. They had a large area to cover, their area was considerably larger than the other two schools. So whatever space is desired, that's what they do. And these are pictures from San Gap. Eliminating sand, granite slides, treehouse. As you can see, their whole system is near over this, the armor is shaved. Very nice playground. I'm sure Lisa was talking, look for a close again. So basically, in that show, we're truly pleased with all of our projects that we've been taking. We're proud of the program that we're building on. Our goal is to continue to be to develop, prepare us for the whole child, and to provide opportunities to learn skills that will be licensed throughout life, throughout their school career, sharing, cooperating. We want to ensure that we provide the best program that we can, and we, we try to ensure that through appropriate, that we definitely appropriate, focused on physical, electric, social, emotional. I think that we've done that through our classrooms and through our playgrounds. And I'd like to make sure please go get both, both the classrooms and playgrounds, and we'll get back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? We have a great partnership with CAC, Miss Price, Miss Fackel, we're great to work with.
You did.
We did have a sick contract with them, but they always go above and beyond the contract, of course.
Absolutely.
So they're absolutely great to work with.
I did want to thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Adam 2B, Student Technology Leadership, presentation, Ms. Thompson, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Tonight is always one of my favorite nights, but if I get to recognize this, we're programming all the successes that they've had throughout the year. Their successes were culminating on April the 19th, when we all traveled to Rook Arena, and the new center, Central Bank of Center there, the new conference center, and they participated in the 2023 state championship. There were well over 18,000 people there that day, including kids and adults, but that was a lot of people for our kids to be with, and they represent our county very, very well. So I just want to give you a little bit of information about what they've done throughout this year. The SLP really starts out in, when school starts back, the kids start looking at their project, their showcase project, that they're going to work on for the year. And so here's a little scenario, or a synopsis of what they've been doing all year. So the high school showcase was titled Jackson County Tourism, so they've been trying to work on some things to promote stories in the county. For their big overall project, Jackson County Middle School, again, was doing something with tourism. They called their showcase Come Visit Jackson County. The pictures that you're seeing here are from the state competition on April 19th, when they were actually presenting their projects for Level Two judging. This all started back in about November, December timeframe. All the schools presented virtually, and they got judged virtually. And if they got a high enough score, they were invited on to Level Two judging at the state championship. So every school in the district had at least one showcase that got invited on to Level Two judging. So they're in this huge, huge arena type of place, I forget, well, it's one of the ballrooms there at the new Central Bank. I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of different schools there, and they're presenting their topic and their showcase, and they're getting judged by a group of volunteer judges. The goal is that after Level Two, they get to go on to Level Three to be recognized at the award show and get to walk across the stage, which we did have one school do. McKee had two showcases that got to go on to state, Bulldog News Network, BNN, and the second showcase was It's Okay to Not Be Okay. And again, there's the pictures of them presenting their, their show. San Gap had the showcase Cyber Bullion, It's Not for Tigers. Tiner had two, the Tiner Student Help Desk, and then they also had one on tourism, I think they came and presented to you all a few months ago, called Come for a Visit State for a Lifetime. And Tiner's Come for a Visit State for a Lifetime was best of Level Two, so they got picked to go on to Level Three judging, and they were identified as the top 90 of 600-plus showcases that were there. So the Tiner showcase got to walk across the stage and be recognized as best in the state. So that's one part of SLP. Starting in about December, January, kids start working on digital products, which means they're taking pictures, they're doing digital arts, they're making movies. Anything you can think of, the kids would create with technology, there's usually a competition for SLP for that. So we had several of those get entered, and they, that they were invited on to state if they met certain criteria. So we had these individuals go on. So from JCHS, we had Elijah Shannon, who did a screen capture tutorial. Carly Cunningham took an original image, so this is actually something she took with her phone or a digital camera that she has, not manipulated at all. JCMS had Carly Handy, is that right? Original? Hardy? I can't see, I may spill it too. Original photo, so it's a picture she took, I think it was called Panama Sunset. Then we had Addie Wilson, who did our JCPS logo for us, so hers got to go on to state and be judged. McKee had Gracie F. in digital art, so this means, the digital art is something they actually create from scratch, so they might be using paint or some other program that they have to create digital art. Jalen B. with digital art. Lily M. with the manipulated photo. So you can see on the right is an original photo that was taken, and then they used some sort of technology to manipulate it. Then they had a group project that was a short film that got to go on. And they had a Minecraft crossing the Delaware, so the kids actually did a Minecraft, I don't even know what they call setting, and it was actually portraying the crossing of the Delaware. San Gap had a technical writing from Gabe Isaac still on to state. Tiner had Kersey Barrett, an original photo. Dawson Waager's original photo. Hannah Gabbert was a multimedia smash-up. Derek Gabbert was a logo that he created, and an infographic that he created. While we were at Lexington on April the 19th, the students also had the opportunity to participate in live competitions there. There's robotics competitions, there's a tech recall competition, there's coding competitions, there's several competitions that are going on throughout the day. And we had a winner, state winner, at one of the state, for the state competitions for UK web coding. And so Shannon Reed from Tiner won first place for the elementary division in coding for this project. But not only did he have the highest score in elementary, he also beat out the middle school and high school, so he actually had the overall highest score for the day. So we're very, very proud of Shannon and what he did that day. So as you can see, the district was very well represented that day. We had lots going on. It was a late night. The awards ceremony started about 4:30, 5 o'clock, probably around 7:30, 8 o'clock, so it was a late night for them to get home, but they had to really get home, and learned a lot while they were there. So what I wanted to nail is I've got certificates for the kids to acknowledge their participation and all their successes that they've had this year. So I'm going to start out with McKee, so Mr. Ward, you want to come on up? And I'm going to present Mr. Ward with the certificate, because without the coordinators, this would not be possible. They put in a lot of hours and time to get these projects off the ground and get these kids ready and represent our district in these competitions. So I have Annabelle Styler, Lake Styler, come on up here, Jared, we're going to take a few. Amelia Fox. Arson Bolt. Laura Bell Jones. Gracie Frost. Jalen Burr. Jason. Josiah Etheridge. Rayland Bena. Rayland Fox. Lily Moore. Kelby Flanman. Kenley Mitchell. Kylie Ray. Ben Agnew. So if you want to go up here and take a picture. You get to be the first. Gotcha. Good job, Brooke. Next, we have San Gap Elementary, so I have Nina Ingram, who are the coordinators there. I think Nina's almost done it, but this will be as long as I have. I think I've got her by, by ear. Thank you very, very much. So we have Chloe Townsend. Leanna Grimes. Alexis Hurt. Ashlyn Boska. Kayden Baker. Gabe Isaac. Kaylee Townsend. Alyssa Welch. Brooklyn Cornet. Whitley Fox. Great job. All right, Tiner Elementary. Ashley Gabbert is our amazing. I get the, the ability to remember all these great people, and I love it. And so from Tiner, we have Breely Isaac. Gia Nolasco. Gia Malasco, Grace Sterling, Mia Judge, Adeline McQueen, Hadley Stewart, Shannon Reed, Reagan Lake, Linda Jickers, Kaya Gray, Kersey Barrett, Remington Bingham, Derek Gabber, Dawson Wagers, Hannah Gabber, Kenna Bond, Kim Dunn, Amelia Truitt. And that's all, is that all? I will print it before we leave. So, Kylie Gray, come on up, and I will get yours printed before we leave. All right, so spread out, so I can take your office. Big group. What'd you do, Miss Gabber, getting them on?
I just thought like the cover of a brand.
Good job. From the middle school, we have our coordinators, Shannon Lake and Kendra Schuman. First year coordinator. And we have Shayla Colton, Jay Sprock, Evan Baker, Nick Fields, Naveya Miller, Al Mullins, Jackson Turner, Amy Turner, Avery Stewart, Carly Hardy, Adeline Wilson, Carly Cunningham. Here's the rest of yours, let me get a picture. Come on, play. All right, gotcha. For our high school, our coordinators, we have a copy. I don't think there's anybody from the high school, but it's Carly Cunningham, Hope Shepherd, Jason Cornet, Elijah Shannon, and Dex, oh, here's Jackson Coffey's from Tyler. Ashley.
How do you get the rest of money?
And so, thank you for your time and letting us recognize the kids tonight for all their hard work. And all this work will start back again in about September, so we can go. If anybody has any questions? Uh, the other thing I wanna talk to you about is there is, uh, the technology plan is on the agenda tonight. Uh, that's just a yearly. Uh, the technology plan is an annual plan that I have to submit to, uh, the Kentucky Department of Education. And it just outlines all of our strategies and activities that we're gonna do next year, uh, utilizing our technology funds, whether it be our P E T S money that we get every year that we, uh, match, whether it's our district funds or whether it's the E R A T funds that I apply for at the, uh, federal level. So, um, I have to kind of lay out a plan, how like we do it for C D, but it's a separate plan that I have to turn in every year. So, if you've got any questions about that, feel free to contact me and I can answer any questions about any of that team that are listed. It's pretty straightforward, it's all about our training, the stuff we're gonna buy, the stuff we're gonna do. So, if anybody has any questions? Thank you all so much.
Hey, item two C, substitute report, person of record, as always, that's the close, that's the attachment before you interview. Uh, one item I was just gonna go through is a reminder, the last day for students is Thursday, maybe twenty fifth. I've heard all the good reports about our assessments, so all that seems to be going well at all high schools, according to what I've been told. Also, our high school graduation is on Saturday, the twenty, May the twenty seventh, eleven o'clock in the high school gymnasium, just a reminder about those two things. So, again, May the twenty fifth, which is on Thursday, is the last day for students. High school graduation is on Saturday, the twenty seventh, in the high school gymnasium, eleven. I took, from skill communications. So, um, our enrollment, I always do an enrollment update in February and we go through our seat numbers. We know since we're not like, you know, come data, that's gonna change by mid- fall. So, I thought I would just look at our current enrollment and what we projected next year and just go up and do an overview of that. If I leave something out, forget something, Mr. Bishop, sure, you can remind me. But, uh, currently, our enrollment is eight, one thousand eight hundred eighty-one. This is very kindergarten through grade twelve. If you look at what we project next year, it'll be one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. Again, this is kindergarten through grade twelve and this, these are just projections. They're not just actual numbers, we don't know the actual numbers until we come back in August. So, again, that's just a projection. Just some information about how we, we do the allotments. We do a tentative allotment that's out by March first of each year. Those numbers are based on February numbers, late in February, correct, Mr. Bishop?
Right.
I don't have the exact date, but I think it was February twenty eighth, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, then we do a, another allotment, which is done by May first. It narrows it down because the numbers are more, for the end of the year and more accurate. And then we do a third allotment, which we check all the numbers within the first ten days of the school year. And again, the first two are strictly projections. The third one that we do in the first two weeks of August, when school is back, is actual numbers. We do a hard count, so we know exactly how many students are there. So, we have a three-step process on allotments. You have March first, which is the tentative. You have the actual allocation, which is sent out to the schools in May, by May first. And you have a final allotment, which is done in the first ten days of the next school year. And a hard count, actual numbers. Correct, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, that's where I go around the classrooms and actually count students in and I have a list of students that are absent that day, so I can get a hybrid count.
Okay. Then, if the numbers go up enough to merit another teacher, we would automatically plug that in the formula. And that position would be advertised per allotment formula and that would be done very soon in August. And, um, as always, we would work with the principal. We would also ask a, a waiver due to disruption of service if an extra teacher's needed. And that can be done very quick as well. Typically, a disruption waiver is approved within two days.
Two days, yes.
There's a hundred percent guarantee that it would be approved, but it's probably ninety-nine point nine. So, a typical certified by law advertisement is for fifteen days, but it's shortened out of this way. So, any questions up to this point about how they allot students?
What's the formula?
The formula is a state formula. It's by board policy. Your, uh, kindergarten through grade three is one per twenty-four. Your fourth grade is one per twenty-eight and your fifth grade is one per twenty-nine. And is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It's a state formula, I P D E, and it's also part of the board policy. It's not this objective thing. Everything that's done with the allotment is objective. It's not right to do subjective. So, the way we do the numbers, uh, we do a five-year historical over the past five years. If you have a hundred third graders, when they grow to fourth grade, do you always have a hundred fourth graders roll up the next year? Probably not. So, we do a five-year historical. They may gain when it's all plugged in the formula, strictly done with formula, completely objective. They may have a hundred and two or they may have ninety-eight, depending on the five-year historical. Can you have me explain that way, so that they don't feel that or?
Well, what we do is we take those historical, it's got at the end of actual first month and then it's actually got on the, so like, for example, this year, it would be, um, so for this year, it'd be April twenty-fifth, would've been what we did this past year. So, you do your, um, you got a predictor that we set last year, you got your end of first month actual and then you do a percentage difference and then you will factor in the amount that you have on the twenty-fifth of April. You build a ratio off of that, and each year has a ratio. Then you have a five-year average ratio. So, it's based upon five years of ratios.
Correct. Strictly objective, correct?
Yes.
The only thing that impact that would be retainees. I think Mr. Bishop tells each school, do you have any retainees in grade five, kindergarten? We get that list. And he also gets the retainees from Miss Freeman, the preschool, I think he did that, correct, Miss Freeman? So, all that is fact beyond the historical, those are the other factors that actually go into the allotment formula. Very complicated, the allotment formula works hand in hand with our teacher quality, Title One, all those things, section three, which is allotment above, allotment, it's certified allotment above actual allotment that works with your Title One and also your teacher quality to finish it out. So, the one thing, you have a, the max, um, classroom reduction. The second part, you never, ever have a supplanting issue with your Title One or teacher quality. It's impossible to have a supplanting issue if you give more than what the actual allotment is, which we do. So, again, the three steps, we do the tentative allotment in March. Those are based on late February numbers. If we do the May first, which is the actual allotment, based on late April numbers. And then we come back in August and do, these are projections, then we come back in August, do an actual hard count where we get firm numbers and then we can adjust the allotment at that time as well.
And we've actually had to do the hard count before.
Yep. So, again, it's completely objective and this is the way it's been done for many years. Mr. Bishop, can I also talk to other districts that are close to us? And what did they tell you?
Um, one neighboring, uh, district, um, basically said, uh, he does it the same way. He is, uh, he's now superintendent, he was D P P for a long time. Um, and basically, he just said he does it the same basic way we do. And that a lot of people don't realize that, uh, section three and title teachers and that kind of stuff are included in with it and that, that's an addition that school districts do that people don't want to acknowledge when they get their allotment first. That's pretty much what all of them said as far as that goes. I don't know, some school districts here, um, in and around us, the districts similar to size of us in East Street, Texas.
So, um, that's our hail. We will revisit this objectively in June, for the next June board meeting, look at all factors. Then, at the latest, we would again, as we always do, in fact, in August, the first ten days, we'll do an actual hard count and make any needed adjustments objectively at that time. But we will revisit, look at all factors and do some analysis between them in June meeting.
Are the, your principal included in that count, the allotment?
They're above, they're an add-on. The librarian's an add-on. Half of the librarian is, in the allotment is an add-on, we pick the other half up through section three. So, they do not count against the teacher portion.
At what point would you roll up? Say you had, I know you'll get percentages, you're not gonna have even numbers. So, at what point would you go up and give them an extra?
If the whole thing goes together, Title One, teacher quality, specific to this, when you get to point five, it goes up. And we would be willing to do point four or five, because it's.
We, we, we actually did a school last year at point four six. Um, and that same school, um, is up now to point one-two. So, you go from barely getting another allotment to going up. I mean, we're talking two tenths, two tenths of a point. It was point four six, I'd actually gotta hear. So, it goes from point four six and it goes up there. Well, that same place is at, uh, point one-two, the number above it. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's rounded, if it's four, less than point four or five, it rounds down. And we do that basically because that rounds up to point five and then.
What did the other districts tell you they rounded that? What did the other districts tell you they rounded that?
Uh, Alzahar County and Lee County, they'll tell me point six. Where they rounded it at. Barbour, point five, Meadowsboro, point five, Hynwood, point five. And the rea, and, and a big reason for doing that is, so, you're looking at two, two to three kids as far as from that number being, say, ten point one-two as opposed to it being ten. So, if you lose five kids or below ten, so, do you want to hire an additional one to two extra? When the students are not there, it's basic, because everybody's gotta remember, you got title teachers coming in, you have section three teachers coming in. So, nobody is gonna be near their cap for minimum eleven class sizes.
I think the main thing is we just don't want in split classes and as low as number in the classroom, so they can get more individual, but I would go out everybody's in page.
We do it completely objective, it's done the right way. A lot of it's replacement of the teachers, generic example only, but you may have a school that has K through three with twenty-two kids in a classroom, again, generic example. They decide to have higher numbers in their primary, K through three. They must, they decide to have lower numbers in their fourth and fifth grade. You may have fifteen or sixteen in the fourth and fifth. Again, primaries cap size is twenty-four, fourth and fifth size is twenty-eight for fourth grade, twenty-nine for fifth grade, correct Wes?
Yes.
So, you may have primary classrooms close to the cap. You may have upper intermediate, we'll call it, uh, basically at high, under cap size.
And that falls at the discretion?
Of the principal.
Yes. So, for example, I mean, you could have a, a school that's got, uh, fifty-eight fifth graders. If they decide to have four classes of fifth graders and it's a one to twenty-nine ratio, um, they could get by with two, but they're deciding to have four. So, having fourteen or fifteen kids in a class, that's up to the principal.
But again, it's completely objective, we revisit everything in June, look at all factors and look them all objectively, so. Are there any questions beyond that?
I think what I always confuse with the original is the fact that the principal or like the librarian or assistant principal is included in those numbers. Unless they're just watching the classroom for a few minutes or something, they're never gonna be in the classroom.
They're add-on. They're not part of the teaching.
They're not part of the lot.
But they're not, they're not part of the, like I said, one to twenty ratio.
Absolutely not.
Nope.
Absolutely not. They're above. You get a one and a half above and one is for the principal, half is for the librarian. Librarian's picked up through section three. Sometimes they decide to do a half a teacher and do a full librarian. A relevant six of one, half a dozen other, which helps, we pick the half a teacher up. It'd be a whole lot easier if they just go ahead and do the half librarian and that's enough.
What about the dean of students or the, the captain? Do they all know our question?
Dean of students, like if a high school is above, the others are below. But that's, we have them as section three to cover. It's very complex when you put the title, what teacher quality, all that together, it's very complex. And unless you deal with it every day, it's hard to understand.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Also, and on these sheets, and I, and I freely and openly show these to any principal who has asked me to come and look at them, I give them the same information that I use, that I've got. I've showed it and explained it several times, everything I, I've got, there's nothing to hide. It's numbers, it's a state formula, it's, here's what it is. And on my sheets, I've got the irritable allocation and it's the irritable allocation with admin. So, basically, all it, like Mr. Smith said, it's an add-on. It's, it's there, but there's two columns for that and that one is an add-on. And like you said, it's just one and a half add-on of the actual allotment. What it is, there is no, and there is no principal and librarian in the allotment. And I have, and I've told, every principal's ever asked me that, I've shown them the difference in it and why both of them are lower. And I know that, I know some of them might not want to admit that, but I have and I've done it numerous times, so. And I've showed it to anybody, and I know.
So, again, we'll revisit, look at everything objectively and look at all factors. And it's done the same this year, it's always been done in pregnancy with Mr. Bishop. It was done that way with Mr. Smith and Mr. Thompson, D P Ps. But it's completely objective. Again, very, very complex when you look at section three, teacher quality, Title One, allotment, all that works together in one pot, it's very complex. Anything else, Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything here.
Any questions? Okay, with communications being complete, I'll do, turn the meeting over to Chairman Neely with item number three.
Item number three, approval of claims in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item four, approval of minutes from April 18, 2023, Redwood Board meeting, in motion.
In motion.
Second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item five, approval of 2023, 2024 school year calendar.
Obviously, it's identical to what we did at the last meeting, but if Cameron shoots it up, I'll very quickly go through it. We get started back on August the 7th, which is on Monday, which is open day. We will all begin to do our trainings that day. We actually have the planned day on the 8th, which is on Tuesday. We've done that for many years. It works really well. We roll into September. The break day is where the Jackson County Fire Day, holiday, obviously is Labor Day. We move into October, then that is Fall Break. We have a flex day, which is a flex PD day. That's already been completed earlier, which is a placeholder within the school year calendar. And a break day for a four-day weekend. We roll into November, you have another flex PD day on the 6th, which is on Monday. Election Day is on Tuesday. Since two of our schools are used for public places, by law, we cannot have school that day. We cannot have destruction when schools are used for a public place. Two are finer and also St. Gall. We roll on into November, a little bit farther, you have another flex PD day. Next is given holiday and break day, so you have a five-day weekend. We go to December. As we've done in the past, we have a two-week Christmas vacation, or Christmas break. Break is a better word. With a holiday right there. January, please. We come into January, we actually have, we'll be off on that Monday because of New Year's. It felt better this year than it has in the past. So it actually falls on Monday, so it'll be off Monday. Students and staff, teachers, everybody will return on Tuesday and Saturday. Martin Luther King Day. We come into February. Obviously, there'll probably be a snow day in there somewhere. We go down to March. There's CKDA Day, which is I think our last flex PD day. There's a total of 14. And be mindful, we did reapply for NTI. We can do up to 10 NTI days again this coming year. And we go into April, something that I really like is being able to do a full week of spring break. I think that's great, and I think, and I think of saying personally this spring, right? We come into May. The last, we have an election day. What is that, the 17th? Line, you mean?
21st.
Okay, May the 21st is the last student, the attendance day is scheduled there. If it moves past that, we have another election day in April, or I'm sorry, in May right there. The makeup days are the number of days missed due to economic weather in the last five years, which is the most. The most days missed in the last five years due to economic weather, which is a total of 14 for us. Then closing day. Obviously, we don't use the makeup days. Closing day moves back closer. That's just the way KD requires us to do it. So it's a good calendar. We have a total of 170 instructional days, four holidays, four flex PD days, two planned days, one open day, one closing day, for 185 total days. So it's identical to what we presented at the last board meeting, a good calendar as recommended by our committee. Any questions about that?
Item five, new motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item number six, approval of 2023 and 2024 school year agreement between the Jackson County School Board of Education and the Jackson County Sheriff's Department for school resources.
We're very fortunate that we'll be able to add a fourth resource officer for the upcoming school year. Myself and the Seismar, Safe Stores Coordinator, Matt and Sheriff Isaacs, I think, Wednesday. And they found another one that could start in August. So this one will be for the elementaries. We already have one at the elementaries. This would make two. We're very hopeful that we can add a third one before school starts. We would love to have one at each school when school starts back in August. But we're very fortunate. Former Sheriff Hayes worked with us, and we got one for the middle school and high school. Current Sheriff Isaacs has worked with us, and we have one, or two, one now and soon to be two, that we share between the elementaries. And we're working toward having another one, so we can have one at each of the elementaries. It's a priority for him and also a priority for us in today's world. It's a necessity to have an SR on each school. So again, the agreement is just like the others we've done. So we're very fortunate to have four out of five, and hopefully when school starts, we'll have five out of five.
Item number six, to the second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman? Item number seven, approval of projected Jackson County High School graduation, graduation list. Projected Jackson County Middle School, eighth grade promotion, this, 2022 and 2023. In motion.
Motion.
Second. Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Ms. Smithson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Fifth grade promotion is the last day of school.
The 25th at 8:30. Thursday to 25th.
Item eight, approval to accept a more beach for the circus property owners to the high school, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item nine, approval of 2023 and 2024 district, take one, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item number 10, approval of a student, like, to define budget for the 2023 and 2024 school year, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Item 11, approval of the Kentucky Education Department Corporation, 2023 and 2024, cooperative membership, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item 12, approval of 2023 and 2024, real, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item 13, approval of education professional service agreement between teachers of American corporate by Jackson County Board of Education, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item 14, approval to discuss and award of 2023, 2024, in the breach, in motion.
Motion.
In second. Smithson?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Item 15, approval of 2023 and 2024 salary schedule.
We worked a lot on our salary schedule last year and made a lot of adjustments on our certified scale. We gave a base of five. We also added an increment at 25 and another increment at 30, which were 2% each. And ours was flat at year 20, which was not good. We were not the only district that had that. There were other districts in surroundings that had that. Once we made that adjustment, they went back and made adjustments, but we just have their scale as well. Also, on our classified scale, it was a little bit low in the front. We made a lot of equity adjustments at the beginning, a base of five. And some of those adjustments were like 10% of that on the scale to get us comparable to similar districts. We also added in year 25, classified scale, because it's our thing to do. We also added in year 30, 2%, classified scale, just like we did in certified. But we did a lot of, a lot of work on our scale last year. It was really good. And we're very, very pleased with what we did last year. It's definitely been enhanced this year. We kind of prep for what we did with classified positions. But we're very fortunate that we can recommend a 1% raise for our certified employees on the certified pay scale. And for our classified employees per hour on the classified pay scale, a flat 50% increase per hour per sale. I'm sorry, 50% increase. Not 50%. So again, we did a lot of equity adjustments on our classified scale. And that allowed us to do the flat pay raise, which is 50 cents per hour or per sale if you look at the actual classified pay schedule. But we're very pleased to be able to recommend the 1%. As with any raise we do, we do a minimum of a five-year projection, and it is sustainable. That's something we always look at. It doesn't make sense to give a raise. And too late, years later, have to go back and take it back. So it is fully sustainable, and again, we're very, very fortunate, very pleased with it. That's, I think, in the last 11 years, that's the six to three we've given this.
Item 15, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Item 16, approval of pending work, averaging for 2023, 2024 school, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item 17, taking approval, careful handling, contract, medical training, and building service for 2023, 2024 school, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item 18, approval of comprehensive, including planes, for Jackson County High School, Jackson County Middle School, T. A. Richard School, St. Gall, and Richard School, in time, Richard School, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item 19, approval of orientation, availability, reasonable part of services contract, in motion.
Motion.
In second.
Second.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item 20, approval to establish, request, establish motion.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen? Item 21, approval, still, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Item 22, approval for, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.
Smithson?
Yes.
Item 23, we didn't have nobody sign it for the coming. Item 24, move on to a year, in motion. Houseman?
Second.
Smithson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Houseman?
Yes.